My name is Mike Sames. I'm the Deputy Chair of the Committee. The Chair is, since it's a politician, she's up, it's not very well this morning. So I'll be conducting the, oh it's gone off, has it? So I'll be conducting. To begin the meeting, there are just a few matters of housekeeping. In the event of an emergency, there are no practice alarms planned for this meeting. So for alarm sounds, please evacuate the City Hall by going down the main staircase and out to the Wall Memorial in front of City Hall. The meeting is being live streamed to Council's YouTube page and will be available after the meeting. Please, would speakers use microphones at all times and speak directly into the microphone? And would participants please mute the microphones when not speaking? Introductions, members of the committee and officers will introduce themselves, starting from my left. I've already introduced myself. And we'll wait until the committee members, officers introduce themselves also.
Thank you. Good morning, councillor Richard Laws.
Councillor Ian Stuteley.
Good morning, councillor Jenny Knight-Saul-Wadd.
Councillor Judith Lovick.
Councillor Ash Haynes.
Councillor Charlie Kane.
Councillor Case Oliver.
Councillor Emma Hampton.
Councillor Carly Harper. And Chair, I had informed the Chair of the Committee that I will have to leave early because I unfortunately have a clash with the East Norwich Development Board. So just to let you know.
No worries.
Good morning, Chair. I'm David Parkin. I'm the Development Manager for the City Council.
I'm Tracy Armitage, a Senior Planner.
Robert Carmichael, Democratic Services Manager.
Laura Emerson, Development Management Team Leader.
Okay, members of the committee may use electronic devices to access their meeting. Meeting papers and visitors are welcome to use mobile phones and other devices, including cameras. But please use them discreetly and set them to silent and do not use voice or camera flash functions. We'll have a short break at 12 and between 13 and 14:00 if there is any business left to resolve. Whilst determining of a planning application is not a quasi judicial process, unlike certain licensing functions carried out by the local authority, it is a formal administrative process involving the application of national and local policies, reference to legislation, case law, as well as rules of procedure, rights of appeal, and an expectation that people will act reasonably and fairly. All involved in these decisions should remember that the possibility that an aggrieved party may seek a judicial review and/or complain to the Ombudsman on grounds of maladministration or a breach of the Authority's code. We've had apologies from.
Thank you, Chair. We've had apologies from councillors Fox, Smith and also councillor Driver.
And we have councillor Stuteley substituted this morning. Declarations of interest, do we have any declarations of interest? Councillor Knight, first of all, is your closest?
Yes, I have an interest in item 4.1, predetermination, as I represent my residence.
Righto, so I think you'll be leaving the room when that. Yeah, fair enough. And councillor Kane?
Yes, I have a conflict interest or declaration rather on the Wall Road property. I know and work with the complainants. I spoke, I sought advice from Democratic Services about this. You told me I should declare it, but as long as they haven't sought advice from me, which they haven't, and I'm not predetermined, which I'm not, then I should be okay to remain and discuss and vote.
Not a problem. Right.
Just a very quick point on councillor Knight's one, councillor Knight does not have to leave the room.
Doesn't have to.
So you can, when you go to speak, you're then welcome to stay. It's only if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest that you'd have to leave the room on that point.
Uh huh, right. No worries. Item three, minutes. The minutes from.
The minutes for taking chair at the next meeting.
Oh right, I was gonna say, I don't appear to have them here, okay. So we won't agree on the minutes at the moment. As Chair, or as Deputy Chair, I've decided to change the order of consideration based on members of the public here today. So we will be hearing the Victoria House item first, followed by Wall Road, followed by Silver Street. So without further delay. 4.3, Application 2500750/ U, Victoria House, Queen's Road. Tracy, are you speaking on this?
I am, and I'm just going to wait for Laura to get to the first slide. Okay, thank you. So the application is for the temporary use of land on the Victoria House site for public car parking. As members are aware, the site was vacated by Marsh some time ago now. And more recently, the former office building has been demolished. The new owners are scheduled to submit a planning application for a major redevelopment of the site very shortly. And members may recall that there was a pre-application presentation last year in relation to a build-to-rent scheme for the site. So the application site largely corresponds to the former staff car park used in association with the offices. If you go to the first slide, Laura, thank you. Access to the car park is via St Stephen's Road. Either side of the road are highway signs which ban a right turn into the site. If you go to the next photograph, please, thank you. And this photograph here shows the site entrance as you turn in from St Stephen's Road. The site has been used for public parking since May, approximately May this year. So the following photographs show parking taking place across the site. So if you wouldn't mind just running through those. Okay. And if you just stop there, Laura, thank you. This photograph shows, well, it's been taken from the ramped egress from the site. So there is a kind of one-way internal arrangement in place by which cars enter the site from St Stephen's Road and then leave the site by this ramped access onto Brazen Gate. Just go to the next couple of slides, thank you. So the southern boundary of the site is adjacent to the boundary of properties on Victoria Street. There's a couple of photographs here showing the nature of that boundary. There is a change in levels at the boundary and there's also hedge and tree planting along that side. So if you just stop there, Laura, thank you very much. In terms of principle of development, DM29 is the relevant development plan policy. And this policy seeks to provide for, but limit, the total amount of public parking in the city centre. And it sets detailed criteria for assessing parking proposals. The text supporting the policy includes consideration of proposals for temporary car parks on sites that are awaiting development and allows for such uses where they would not prejudice long-term redevelopment of the site and where the use would not result in an unacceptable traffic impact. And the principle of development section of the report confirms that temporary permission is sought in this instance. It's sought for that period of time that the site is sitting vacant and the timescale for an application to be submitted and determined by the planning authority. In terms of traffic impact, the County Council Highway Authority has raised no objection to the proposal. But during the period of time the site has been operating, it's been reported that motorists have been entering the site from St Stephen's Road, contrary to the signs which ban that right turn movement into the site. And also there's been reports of some motorists ignoring the internal one-way arrangement and leaving the site again onto St Stephen's Road rather than onto Brazen Gate. The proposal now includes measures to attempt to manage that access arrangement more effectively. So a range of measures are proposed, including increased signage on the site entrance. If you just go to the next, so a sign like that would be displayed at the site entrance, kind of making it clearer to members of the public that they need to access the site by going around the roundabout and coming back on themselves. And if you go to the next slide also. In terms of preventing exit from the site onto St Stephen's Road, the site entrance will be reconfigured to introduce bollards, a ramp and a one-way restrictor plate, which will only allow you to kind of drive forward over it rather than coming out of the site over it. So there's physical measures proposed at that entry point. And furthermore, if you just go to the next slide, Laura. Additional signage is proposed within the site to make it clear to users of the car park how the arrangement operates within the site. In terms of the principle of development section also goes on to cover other elements of DM2029 in relation to matters of the public car park cap of 10,000. The latest monitoring indicates current car parking spaces within the city are around 8,800. And on that basis, the 266 spaces on the site would not lead to the cap being exceeded. In terms of tariff, which is another aspect of car park operation that DM seeks to control, members should note the planning condition, that one of the planning conditions at the end of the report, which sets minimum tariff levels for car parking on the site. Under this tariff, the current cost of parking would increase above those existing levels being charged. In terms of secure-by-design considerations, when first consulted, the Designing Out of Crime Officer at Norfolk Police raised a number of queries regarding the operation of the car park and raised questions of safety. And these matters have been discussed with the car park operator. And in response, a car park management plan has been submitted, which sets out operational arrangements for the site. In particular, it confirms that the car park will be closed to the public between the hours of 11pm and 6am. That there'll be security patrols prior to the site opening, sorry, prior to the site closing and opening. Installation of temporary lighting to be operated during hours of darkness when the car park is open. And you'll note from the Updates Report that the Designing Out of Crime Officer has been reconsulted on that latest iteration of the Car Park Management Plan. And they've confirmed that they now found the arrangements to offer an appropriate level of crime prevention for the use, the temporary use. And these operations would also limit the impact of the parking use on residents living adjacent to the site. And if you go to the next slide, Laura. We have now received a lighting plan which confirms where temporary lighting, which would be battery or solar-powered, would be sighted on the site. These lighting apparatus would be kind of orientated away from the boundary with neighbours shining across the site in the direction of the city centre. And the planning agent has confirmed that the lighting would be warm lighting within the amber spectrum to limit impact on wildlife. A number of planning conditions are recommended. These include a time limit for the permission of 18 months, the minimum tariff charges, operation of the car park in accordance with the latest car park management plan, installation of lighting, and again, I'll just refer you to the Updates Report, a condition restricting hours, just to make that clear in terms of hours of operation. Given the application is retrospective, the conditions will also include an implementation timescale for those new measures and operational arrangements to be introduced. So on the basis of the conditions recommended, the proposal is considered in accordance with the adopted development plan and it's recommended that planning permission is granted. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We have two speakers. Councillor Davis, first of all, you have three minutes. Councillor Davis is speaking in objection to the application.
Thank you, Chair. I'm objecting on behalf of town close residents and the wider city community because this proposal conflicts with our adopted development plan and the direction of emerging policy. Policies DM28, DM29, DM31, GNLP4 and GNLP 7.1 all promote restraint on city centre parking and prioritise walking, cycling and public transport. This proposal, besides several underused car parks, adds 266 new public spaces, expanding car dependency in the most accessible part of the city. That is directly contrary to the restraint principle. Could officers identify any adopted policy that supports additional public car parking capacity other than the narrow flexibility in DM29.8, which requires no unacceptable impacts and no prejudice to redevelopment? There is no evidence of parking need. Both Thickthorn and Harford Park and Ride Services stop at the bus station opposite this site. They're low cost, direct and clearly underused. There's no unmet parking need. This would simply draw drivers from existing sustainable options. Under 38.6 of the Planning and Compulsory Purposes Act 2004 and paragraph six of the MPPF, temporary permissions must still accord with the development plan unless material considerations clearly outweigh it. Temporary status doesn't exclude conflict, it only limits duration, not impact. DM28 sets the restraint principle, reduce car travel and prioritise sustainable transport. DM29 manages city centre parking within a 10,000 space ceiling, not a quota. Even below that limit, new or temporary car parks are only permissible where they cause no unacceptable impact and don't delay or prejudice redevelopment. Here, both conditions fail. Strategic harm, 266 extra spaces undermine restraint policy. Environmental harm, avoidable trips increase emissions. Immunity harm, disturbance and antisocial behaviour are already evidenced. Those are material harms. So this proposal fails DM28, DM29 and GNLP4, regardless of whether the citywide total is below 10,000 spaces. The new draft SPD for GNLP2, Sustainable Communities, strengthens requirements for low carbon design and EV infrastructure. Approving a large fossil fuel car park with no EV or cycle provision moves directly against that policy trajectory. This scheme conflicts with the development plan, meets no proven need, undermines sustainable transport and risks delaying regeneration. DM28 and 29 together set a presumption of restraint, not expansion. The proposal demonstrably fails that test. Please refuse this application, as contrary to DM28, 29, GNLP4 and GNLP 7.1. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now invite Jason Tucker, who is speaking as the applicant. You have three minutes also.
Why would he be susceptible? How would you carefully require the scheme to respond to the comments? As a chartered surveyor myself, who have great experience in such matters, I want to emphasise the current condition of the site. Prior to the car park being managed, that was a clear blocking block and a negative impact on assessing the area, creating a sense of neglect rather than contribution. You'll see an influx of demand once the site is open, showcasing a clear need for additional parking. Having the site occupied and used, as we've seen across other sites in UK, has ensured that during pre-development stages, sites that are occupied are less susceptible. By introducing a managed car park here, operating temporarily, it's likely to long-term development. You'll bring active use back to the land. This will restore vitality, help reduce unmanaged use and contribute positively to the street state. Although formerly used by Star, the site now lies largely empty. Some public use still occur during fundraising events under previous ownership, not in a managed, regular form. What we are proposing is structured, well-regulated use, 6am to 11pm daily. Drawl access with signage, with safety licensing, with traffic control advice and with measures in place to minimise impact on neighbours. Over recent months, we have worked closely with council officers and Paddy Star, that have listened carefully to feedback and concerns. We have made meaningful amendments to ensure full compliance with policy. These include reducing the number of boundary signs to avoid visual clutter. Testifying with size and location, signage to be cautious and respectful to neighbouring properties. Introducing several battery-powered lighting that appropriately shielded only over operating during busy hours. Instilling access control ledgers including one-way flow plates, bollards and speed control beaches that harmful traffic movements, especially next day ones seen through. Creating this tariff the longest days to ensure that facility is not encouraged to meet parking in conflict with the council's objectives. Provising overnight closure, locked access outside operational hours and regular patrol, maintain security and deter misuse. These are not minor tweaks, they are fundamental changes intended to respond strongly to objection and to protect residential immunity, highway safety and official character. In conclusion, we believe this proposal strikes the right balance. Activating a vacant site, providing necessary service, ensuring impacts are mitigated and respecting the local environment and policy framework. We ask the Committee to view the scheme and lightly suggest revision to the event. This is to demonstrate both unwillingness and affinity to deliver a responsible, safe and well-managed car park during this interim period. Thank you for your attention and we have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the parts of the proceedings where our members ask any questions. I see councillor Harper has her hand up first.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if officers could just tell us a little bit more about meanwhile use and the impact that that typically has on sites being built forward. We've heard a view that this meanwhile use could delay regeneration of the site. And I just wanted some clarity on that. Is there evidence to support that? And where are we in the planning application process for the wider site?
In terms of, last question first. I'm expecting that the application will be submitted within the next four weeks. So it's close to submission. In the importance of ensuring decisions don't delay regeneration is very much a material consideration. And hence is the reason why the DM29 and the text within DM29 makes it clear that decisions mustn't do that, they mustn't prejudice that more beneficial long-term redevelopment for the city centre. The way we manage that is through temporary permissions. So in this case, permission is sought for 18 months. That's considered a reasonable period to allow the application to be submitted, for it to be fully assessed, consulted and for it to go to committee for a decision. So we feel that the length of the permission sought would not prejudice long-term regeneration of the site. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just? Can I just add to that? I mean, we have in the past refused applications for temporary use where we believe it would delay the useful regeneration and reuse of a site. We don't believe that that is the case in this instance. In fact, there is evidence that actually having, being able to kind of benefit from an income stream whilst an application is under development can actually make it easier for an applicant to bring forward a desirable redevelopment of the site. And we believe that that is what is happening in this instance. And actually, rather than acting as a barrier to redevelopment, this actually facilitates the process. Thank you.
Sebastian, you need, yeah, just a follow-up and then I'll go to councillor Kane. All right, okay, we'll have councillor Kane first then.
Thank you very much. Kind of following on from what councillor Harper was saying. I do, I believe we were just given a sort of idea of the planning application, the subsequent planning application we're expecting, just being kind of shortly. I wondered whether we had any idea of timescale on that. And if it isn't, you know, within the 18 months, is there a risk that this can then be extended and this temporary 18-month car park becomes a temporary five-year car park?
I'm led to believe by the planning agent who's responsible for submitting the application that it is very soon. I expected it actually in September, it's been slightly delayed, but I'm reasonably confident that it will come in in this month. Beyond that, I mean, if they want to use the, continue to use the site beyond the 18 months, they would need to reapply for planning permissions. It would be, you know, a new application and a separate consideration. So we would have the opportunity yet again to consider the merits or not of a further extension. But they would need to apply.
Councillor Stuteley was next.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to councillor Harper's question. Excuse me while I find my notes. So I'll come back to that. My question is about the surface of the car park. So paragraph 78 of the report concedes that the car park service is not ideal and that reservicing was considered uneconomic for temporary use. Given that DM29.8 requires consideration of both the availability and quality of existing parking provision, how can a substandard demolition site with uneven surfaces, no marked disabled bays and limited lighting be considered high-quality provision under that policy?
In terms of the condition of the surface, there are areas of the car park, particularly to the east, closest to the kind of Brackendale boundary, which are, you know, they haven't been affected by the demolition works on the site. So they are as they were when the site was in operation. In association with the offices. And that is the case in many parts of the site. However, closer to the building is where there's some deterioration of the surface. Not to an extent that, I believe it's entirely unsuitable for use, but it isn't a, you know, newly marked out sealed surface as you would expect for a permanent application for, you know, a permanent long-term car park use. So yes, it is variable across the site. The management plan indicates that, you know, there will be periodic inspections of the surface to correct, remedy any problems if it's considered necessary to do so. So we think the management plan offers that reassurance that going forward, that that surface will be inspected and managed accordingly. that that surface will be inspected and managed accordingly. Lighting, we touched on that. I mean, that is something that we consider is necessary, given the hours of operation of the car park. The fact that it's going to be used during hours of darkness, we consider lighting is appropriate in terms of creating a sense of security across the site.
Is that a follow-up?
Thank you. So you're conceding that it is a fairly low-quality site? And in that case, if higher quality parking, including Queen's Road and Chancery Place multi-stories and local, there's a Queen's Road, on Queen's Road, sorry, there's a surface-level car park that's in good condition. And there are two underused park and ride sites that drop off at the bus station, which is directly opposite, all of which are of a higher quality and underutilised. So how can this proposal possibly meet DM twenty-nine's test that temporary uses must not undermine transport policy objectives or duplicate existing better provision?
Well, I think, I mean, part of the mitigation for that is that it is a temporary meanwhile use. So, but in terms of actually the, in terms of the standard that it provides, yeah, if we were allowing a permanent car park on this location, it would be a different beast. But part of the material consideration in the offer here, and I think that's partly reflected in the prices for this car park, is that it is a meanwhile use. So it is not of the same standard as if it were a permanent use, but it is of an acceptable standard in officers' views. In terms of, I mean, I'm not sure where your evidence is that some of the facilities that you're actually saying are underutilised, actually are underutilised. I mean, in terms of the car parks for the Chancery Place etcetera, I'm not sure we've actually got any evidence that they are actually underutilised. Certainly, we as officers don't have any of that evidence. So I don't believe this is actually necessarily undermining policy directives. And also, when you're looking at the term, the lifetime of the development plan, councillor Davies mentioned the trajectory of those policies. They're over a twenty-plus period. It's our view as officers that an eighteen-month consent for a temporary car park, which could potentially enable the desirable redevelopment of this site, is not actually against those trajectories which are over a much longer period of time. No conflict with DM twenty-nine in officers' view.
Okay, and then we'll move on to our next speaker.
Thank you. Okay, is it not the case that all developments and parking included have to meet the tests for the plan? So in this case, you know, DM twenty-nine, the temporary use, in other words, isn't sufficient mitigation for this. It still has to meet the test for the plan. And it appears not to do that for DM twenty-nine. So specifically, reiterating the point, this is potentially of a lower quality than other local sites. And I believe that local member knowledge is permissible as part of a planning process. And I represent Bancroft Ward and previously represented Town Close. And I know that these car parks are underutilised. And I think everybody that's been to the recycling centre will know that the park and rides are massively underutilised. And two of them provide a service right opposite this site. So there's no need for this, there's no, the creation of need as the applicant has suggested is basically, as you've also alluded to, undercutting of other car parks.
We get to the question please.
Yes, so basically, does this meet the test of DM twenty-nine? Being that you can see that it's low quality, being that temporary use is no mitigation?
I don't think we're going to agree. The fact that it is a temporary use is a degree of mitigation. As a decision-maker, when you're looking at an application, you can decide what weight to attach to which parts of which of the policy. And you can decide, as we have as officers in this instance, that it would actually be unreasonable to expect a temporary meanwhile use for eighteen months to actually meet the same design standards as a permanent use that could last for ten, twenty years. So that is capable of being a material planning consideration when you're considering the acceptability of this particular planning application. It's an eighteen-month time period that is material. In terms of member knowledge, I don't want to kind of devalue that, but when we are looking at, when this committee is actually determining a planning application, if we were to refuse it, we would have to be able to defend and provide evidence to support the facts upon which we refuse it, rather than opinions. And I would suggest that we don't have evidence to support the suggestion. We have opinions which suggest that maybe some of these car parks are underutilised, but I don't think that's actually the fundamental point. I think the point is, in terms of determining whether or not it complies with DM twenty-nine as decision-makers, you can decide what weight to apply to which parts of DM twenty-nine. And part of the materiality of that determination, of that consideration rather, is whether or not this is actually a permanent car park or not. And as I say, another part of the materiality of that consideration is, does this actually assist the desirable regeneration of the site? Our suggestion is that this actually does play a role in achieving the desirable, potential desirable regeneration of the site. If whatever comes along later is deemed not to be desirable and committee makes a decision to refuse an application, then this is an eighteen-month permission if members choose to grant it. And there's that level of control over what happens with the site going forward.
Now I have councillor Oliver next, but on my list I've got councillor Haines, Lawes, Noah Lubbock and another question from councillor Harper. If it's procedural, yeah, you may.
I just wonder if we could seek some advice from democratic services about the definition of predetermination in a quasi-judicial context, please. I think that'd be quite important. Thank you.
Major? So as laid out in the original part, so planning is not a quasi-judicial function, but we do have to follow the rules of predetermination with regards to the meeting. So predetermination would be where a member, so we can't see into the hearts and minds of councillors. So essentially, there comes a point where members, if someone has made a statement that would be, or made a public statement, or was deemed by a well-informed person to be subjective in their views to the point that they would not consider any evidence further and that their mind was closed, that would essentially be predetermination.
I'm just, as a comment here, I'm guessing all councillors here have an open mind on.
May I make an intervention, a point of personal clarification? Because I believe that might have been directed towards me. I have a duty to seek questions, seek answers to questions I have on any planning matter. And if the answers that I receive don't meet the evidence that I've read and my interpretation of those policies, then I'm entitled to have follow-ups and have a debate about those questions. So I don't think there's any predetermination here. If I receive good answers, then my mind remains open.
As I said, I'm certain that all councillors here understand the difference between predetermination and predisposition, and councillors can be predisposed. The important aspect is all councillors here are experienced on planning and they're well-aware that in presenting an argument, they may have their views swayed one way or the other. I know it certainly happened to me in the past. So can I move on now through the list of questions? Well, we've, councillor Oliver's been waiting for a while.
Democratic services, what has changed this morning insofar as when somebody has declared an interest, spoken against the application and hasn't been asked to leave the room? Is that what we normally do?
Are we talking about this item or are we talking about? Sorry. So as far as I'm aware.
Pass, when I've declared an interest and a predetermination and I've spoken to an application, I've been told I have to leave the room during the debate.
I can't speak to previous advice, but my understanding is that it's always, it's my view that there is no need to leave the room if you are predetermined on that. It's regards to interests with regard on disclosive pecuniary interest, that's always been my understatement. But obviously, I can't speak to before.
I have done it on a number of occasions and been told to leave the room while the discussion is taking place, to the point that you don't actually know what the decision is at the end. But that may have been before your time, but.
That has been my experience in the past, but when we consider, when members of the public speak, they speak for and against and we don't ask him to leave the room for the determination. I can see your point.
Yes, it's the fact that one may feel intimidated. I mean, that's the wording that we've always said, leave the room so that you don't, you know, glare at your fellow councillors and say, you know. But that's always been my experience until this morning.
I'll leave when we reach a point.
Okay, we'll now move through our list of questions. Councillor Oliver, you next, you've been waiting very patiently.
Thank you Chair. I've got a few questions, but I suppose to start with, we're told that there's some, we're asking to consider an eighteen-month temporary use. And if there is any wish to extend that, then presumably that would have to come back to committee or the process would start again via officers. But I'm wondering why we're considering this application now when the car park's been in operation since May, I think we said. Yeah, I have a concern about that and it's mentioned that it's an income stream. I appreciate the issue of, you know, if an area is in use, then it's less likely to attract ASB. But it's, the implication is that it's part of a business plan or an essential what's a beneficial activity that will enable a future development. But I don't believe that we were informed about that, you know, any kind of outline plans. So I suppose what I'm saying is we seem to be dealing with things in retrospect rather than proactively and looking at what's actually needed. We're trying to fit a car park into, you know, square peg into a round hole, so to speak.
If I can come back on, if I can come back on that point, I think when the applicant presented to committee, they had probably not decided what, or if any, meanwhile use that they might actually want to get on the site. So they were presenting on their proposals for what comes next, rather than actually the interim. In terms of this being a retrospective application, that's always really, I mean, that's always really annoying, for want of a better word, to be actually faced with a position where we're determining something retrospectively. Because as we've seen through the considerations, through the consideration of this application, how it's operated at the moment is not satisfactory. So the fact that it's open all twenty-four hours, the fact that it's not lit, the fact that there's been issues with the access and egress from the site, that all demonstrates that how the car park has been operated to date has actually produced problems, which it would have been a hundred times better if we were not faced with a retrospective application. However, having said that, the legislation does allow for the determination of retrospective applications. And when, as a decision-maker, whether it's officers or whether it's members at Planning Applications Committee, the applicant shouldn't be penalised for actually making an application to regularise something that's already been done. We as decision-makers need to look at it in light of the development management, the development plan policies and any other material considerations and determine whether it's acceptable or not, regardless of whether or not it is retrospective. But I hundred percent agree with the sentiment, it is not desirable to actually be determining applications retrospectively, but it is allowable.
I hope we can keep our questions fairly concise.
Can I just follow up on that though?
A quick one please, because we have.
To confirm, so really, we should be looking at it as if there was no car park there at the moment and it was empty space and an application was brought to us to operate it on a temporary basis as a car park.
You should be determining it on the basis as though, well, regardless of whether it's retrospective or not, you should be determining the application the same way.
So to say, do we need a car park there? Is that consistent with our policies and plans as a city?
If you as a decision-maker believe it's appropriate to ask that question in the determination of this particular application, you don't, then you bring that into the consideration. The fact that it's there doesn't mean to say that the local planning authority has to grant permission.
Can we switch to questions and we'll move on to debate afterwards? Councillor Haines, you next.
Yeah, hopefully a quick one. Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. In the police's comments in between pages forty-five to forty-seven, you know, they start off by saying that they are concerned about the safety on the site. And then in the second response, they're saying there's still concern about safety on the site. But that seems to be, you know, paragraph forty-six, before the lighting provision was applied to us. Have we gone back to the police after that and are they now happy with health and safety on the site? Because to me, it looks like there's still some dark spots there. And I also have concerns about how, you know, it seems like lighting is shining away from properties rather than shining into properties. And whether there's a way to reduce some of those dark spots that remain on the site without shining light into properties. But my main question is, are the police now happy with the safety on this side?
Yes, the police were consulted on the latest iteration of the car park management plan, which includes the lighting scheme, and they have confirmed that they are satisfied.
Sorry, just to add to that, the condition that we proposed to attach, and this plan's very, obviously very indicative, and it shows the number of units and the general direction in which they will point. But the condition that we would attach would cover the detail, the angling of the lighting heads and things like that to maximise coverage where it's needed, but to make sure it doesn't impact upon the residential properties on Victoria Road.
Councillor Lawes.
Thank you Chair, I've got. Just to confirm that the applicant this morning is a different possession from the expected ultimate property. On the site, it wasn't totally clear agency.
I've just come back on that one. Yes, the applicant, we spoke today, you're a car parks, they are operating the car park on behalf of the landowner. The landowner will be the applicant for the large-scale regeneration. The landowner will be the applicant for the, the, the large scale regeneration scheme. So the, the landowner isn't here today.
Thank you.
Last one, oh, sorry.
Just a couple of then related questions. The, the, the idea of an 18 month limitation, where did that come from? Was it from the, the landowner, Euro Car Parks or officers? And can I throw in, you may want to answer separately, is there any guidance on definition of temporary? Because 18 months arguably is, is reasonable length of time. I mean, temporary can mean, you know, your village fate, the farmer's field is temporary car park for the afternoon. Eighteen months is obviously a very, very different timescale. I don't know whether there's any guidance on that.
David was just saying that temporary is anything that's not permanent. But I mean, I think, you know, there is a stage where temporary has a degree of permanence because it's been in place for so long. But in terms of the 18 months and where that came from, there has been some negotiation between officers and the applicant about this. Initially, the applicant was seeking longer than 18 months. So there has been some negotiation on that. From my perspective, in terms of considering the time it's likely to take to receive an application, assess and determine an application. And if in the event that gets permission for them actually to be on site, starting a development, 18 months would seem to be a reasonable period of time to allow for a meanwhile use in that interim. Because obviously the alternative is the site is completely unused. It's hoarded off and there's no activity on the site at all. Meanwhile, uses do provide some benefit in the short term.
Sorry, just, just, just to add to that. I mean, we, we've granted temporary uses for five years. Recently, we've granted a temporary use for 10 years on the St Xavier's Yard container park. So it's, yeah, I was being slightly facetious, but it is, yeah. Normally you would grant a permanent planning permission. So anything that is time limited in terms of when, when consent ends is deemed to be temporary.
Councillor Knight.
Hi, yeah. I just wanted to get a little bit more detail on the security at night. And if there is like a gating system and things like that.
Yes, the, the site is enclosed at the moment by hoarding and fencing. There is a, Laura, could you go to the second photograph?
Yeah.
The entrance from St Stephen's Road at the moment, when the car park is operation is, is open. But I don't know if you can see there, that, that, there. My understanding is that there, there are gates at that entrance and there are, there's also a gate or barrier at the Brazen Gate exit. So when the site is closed, the car park management plan says it will be gated and made secure. And in terms of other security, prior to the site being secured, there would be a patrol of the site to ensure that anyone is moved on who shouldn't be there. And that would also take place in the morning before the site is open. And then during the day in terms of security, it would be periodic patrols by the car park attendant who would offer some onsite presence.
Councillor Lovett, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Paragraph fifty seven deals with the 10,000 car park cap. You say it's significant. Can I ask you how significant in terms of DM twenty nine? And, you know, what weight would that carry if, if there were some challenge to a decision to allow this car park to go ahead?
I mean, the 10,000 cap has been in operation for a considerable amount of time. And as far as I, I am aware, you know, we've tried to make decisions where that cap has not been exceeded. However, I think there have been times where temporary permissions have been allowed which exceed the cap because of their only been approved on a temporary basis. And I, I think the, the 10,000 cap is an important way that the, that we seek to limit car parking within the city centre for all the reasons that we know we need to be doing that in terms of promoting sustainable travel. But trying to balance that with the, the desire of some people to still want to travel into the city centre to, to shop and support businesses, et cetera, in the way that they do. Eight thousand eight hundred and four is actually probably the lowest level of parking we've had in the city centre for some years. And that kind of reflects the fact that there's been car park closure, particularly in the north of the city, around Anglia Square, St Xavier's Car Park. I know Rose Lane Car Park at the moment, two, two floors are closed, so that there's, there's been a lowering of car park availability in recent years. And the eight thousand eight hundred suggests a, you know, a, a reasonable headroom in terms of being able to accommodate additional parking, albeit on a temporary basis.
Can I just come back and say, would it be, how long has that been in place? You say for many years. And would, would, would there be a sort of assumption that with an increase in population and development, development around the area, that you could argue that, you know, space is needed in the city centre to accommodate various activities where people need to get close to formability purposes or such things. But we need to keep near that cap to, to keep the viability of the city, city, you know, good. And, and not exceed it at the same time wanting to increase some active travel. But take into account that there has been an increase in population. But would we need to know just how long that cap has been in place?
Sure, if I can confirm. I mean, certainly the current DM plan makes explicit reference to 10,000 number. And I, I believe the predecessor also included that figure. I believe, can't confirm that. But from, from, certainly for the last, I've been here for 12 years and it's been in operation over that time period. And, and certainly, you know, DM twenty nine remains up, you know, it, it remains the adopted development plan position. Going forward, it will be subject to review. The sorts of things that you've raised presumably would be considered in whether the 10,000 cap is justified. But certainly, you know, the, the, the adopted position at the moment is that the 10,000 cap is applied. And certainly, you know, I think it's, the DM twenty nine has a cap, but it's also about providing for parking within the city centre, but operating some controls. So I think, you know, the, the policy acknowledges that there is some value of having provision of public car parking within the city.
All right. I do have a couple more questions. I'll throw in a question here myself, if I may. I understand that the Marsh site for many, many years has operated weekend parking and also peak time parking. So in essence, this doesn't sort of change that aspect of things. Am I correct in that?
I believe so. I mean, I couldn't give you details on that, but I know that there were times of, I don't know whether it was weekends, but I know certainly at Christmas time, I think the car park was made available for Christmas shoppers in the past. That's what I'm told. So I think there has been some occasional use of the private car park for public parking purposes in the past.
Okay. Councillor Hampton has been waiting a long time now.
I think councillor Lovett's question, basically the answer to that covered what I was going to ask about the sort of how we can balance the consideration between what DM twenty nine says about the 10,000 cap and any sort of anecdotal views about car park usage. So I, I don't think I've got anything further specific to ask at this stage.
Right. Councillor Harper, is this a, a question? Because we, we seem to be straying into the area of debate, which we will do very, very shortly.
Absolutely. This is a question. I just wondered if members were minded to reject this application. You, you've already said that nothing would be taking place, that, you know, the site would be empty. Is there, in a scenario where members did reject this application, would that mean that we are unable to condition the use of the, the sites?
A short answer is yes. Any, 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 any use of the site, if you refuse this planning application, any use of the site for public car parking would not have the benefit of planning permission. So we, we couldn't exercise any control over it. Having said that, the control that we would then exercise over is through the enforcement, our enforcement powers. And we would, if committee is, is minded, if, if, if the application is refused, then we would, the logical conclusion is that we would have to serve a notice requiring the use of the car park to cease.
Councillor Haynes.
It was, again, hopefully quite a quick one about the 10,000 cap. I assume, I tried to look this up last night quickly, but couldn't find an answer conclusively, basically. There's nothing in there that suggests where that 10,000 cap geographically should be, is there? So like, one of the points it makes in here is that we've recently lost car parking spaces in the north of the city. But that doesn't have any impact on us adding more in the south of the city. There isn't anything that makes it say, well, if we're losing them in the north of the city, we should be trying to put them there. Is there, it's a 10,000 cap that covers the city centre completely. Thank you.
Just to confirm, the 10,000 applies to the city centre.
But I think we have really exhausted questions, so I'd like to move now into the area of debate. So I will start with councillor Stuteley.
May I ask one more question? It's, it's fundamental to the.
Quite often your questions strain to debate anyway, so that's why I've said what I've said.
I will stick to questions on this. I, I ask, I ask a range of questions in order to, to form a, a fully informed view. So can officers confirm that under section thirty eight six of the two thousand and four Act and the MPBF, paragraph six, temporary permissions must still accord with the development plan unless material considerations clearly outweigh it?
Our view is it does accord. Again, we can't go back to the point, councillor Stuteley, that our, our view as officers, which I appreciate you might not share, is that it does accord with the policies of the development plan. So we, we, the, any, any, our, my advice to, to committee as, as, as an officer is that if you make a decision to approve the application, it would accord with the policies of the development plan.
Just a very quick follow up today, if I may.
We've had a big bite of the cherry compared to other councillors. So let's give some other people. I think councillor Kane was wishing to.
Thank you. It was actually sort of on a similar area. So specifically, I'm just coming back to some of the objections given. And they've specifically mentioning DM twenty eight and DM twenty thirty one, and we've talked a lot around DM twenty nine. And it's saying that it's to seek to restrain city centre parking division in highly accessible locations. So that's separate from the 10,000 cap, right? So it's, it, you know, we're, it, are we not going against that even though we're under the 10,000 cap? Because we're, we're not restraining in a highly accessible area.
Policy allows for car parking within the city centre. DM twenty nine allows for car parking. It, it seeks to limit it and control the quality of it, but it allows for it.
And we have restricted a lot of car parking. And a number of county councillors lament the fact they can't drive into the middle of the city parked by the market and go and buy a sack of spuds. Admittedly, these county councillors live way outside of the city, but that's one of the lamentations. Councillor Oliver, I think you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. It's about road safety and traffic volume. When coming out of the car park, there's no restriction. The, the Brazen Gate bus gate is situated just back from that, isn't it, on Grove Road? So cars aren't allowed to go down that way during morning rush hour, I think till half past nine, and only buses are allowed through. But if coming out of the car park in the designated exit, then they'll kind of cut that off, won't they? It won't apply. So, you know, the letter of the law might be being followed, but the aim of it to reduce traffic in Russia won't be. Is that correct?
Just, just to kind of emphasise that the county councils have not raised any objection on highway safety grounds. So they will have looked at the operation of the car park in associating with the adjacent road network. I mean, peak use of the car park, when you were referring to the morning, I wouldn't have thought that would be peak time or a busy time for vehicles exiting onto Brazen Gate.
Right. I've not seen the hands recently. I'll, I'll go councillor Lovett, councillor Harper, and then back to councillor Stuteley.
Thank you. We have had a long debate over this and I think it's important that we do. But I think the most important thing that we've heard from, from the officer is that a planning application is expected soon. And I was very excited by the, by the presentation that was given over a year ago now. And I'm pleased that it, it, it is in the offing, as it were. I, I think that because we have policies that encourage the use of, of brownfield sites or in the city centre to be used for car parking space, it seems a no brainer to me that that is exactly what's being done here to, to facilitate the development coming forward. And so with all things considered, and knowing that the car park will in future be better managed than it, than it has been the last five months, it'll be better managed than it was when it was a car park with Marsh to some extent, because there'll be the lighting. And there'll be some presence, certainly to close the gates at night and hopefully less antisocial behaviour, which we haven't had any proof of, but was, was mentioned. And with the lights being directed away from the occupants on Victoria Road, I think all those considerations lead me to think that it, it, it is acceptable to have a car park temporary 18 months in this space. And I will be voting in favour of it.
Councillor Harper.
Um.
Sorry?
We settled on questions and hadn't moved to debate. I, I thought we'd gone to.
I, I said a little while ago, if you heard that we were moving into debate, so yes.
I thought that was an observation rather than a direction. Thank you. Apologies. And I, I mean, I find myself in, in agreement with councillor Lovett on this. I think, you know, I'd much rather we use brownfield sites for things, things like this. I mean, I'm, I'm not wildly enthusiastic about more parking in, in the city centre. And, and actually I've spoken, you know, kind of about, about the need to, to try and reduce that, you know, in previous planning committees. But I think, you know, on balance, I'll be supporting this application because I think there are ASB concerns, you know, related to the site as well. And I think the idea of, you know, leaving it empty without any planning, without any management plan in place, without any planning conditions in place, I think on balance that will be worse for, for local residents and worse for, for the city centre. So, yeah, I'm minded to support this.
Councillor Stuteley.
Yes, thank you. I think the, the fact that planning, the full planning is expected soon actually means that this site probably isn't, isn't needed. Especially if it's, if it's imminent and even delayed. Councillor Lovett earlier talked about.
And councillor Lubbock earlier talked about disabled people, that more people in the city requiring disabled provision, but should remember that this has no disabled provision because of the accessibility issues. The cap is, is not a target. It's, it's, it's a, it's, it's a cap. And the policy of DM twenty eight and twenty nine is a policy for restraint. And I, it is my view, despite officers' detailed and answers, which I thank them, it is my view that it doesn't meet policy. And I think there is case law to back this up, should councillors be minded to, to vote against. The chair raised a point about additional use of the site previously. And I know that there was, there was occasional use, but there was no routine weekend use. And that's one of the issues that residents have raised about this. The fact that there's a, a lot of additional traffic movements and noise at the weekends and, and in the evenings that wasn't there before because it was a, it was an office block with a nine to five routine. The highways is, is an operational desk based assessment. And we've heard from residents that the, the right hand turn from St Stephen's Road is causing tailbacks. And everyone knows who drives in this area or uses public transport that the, the right hand turn into Town Close School is a, is a major, major tailback. And, and this is what's happening here and it's going to continue to happen despite signage. And along, along, further along the road at the school, people are using the bus lane to circumnavigate traffic that's built up. And the same thing will happen along this road. So there is no, highways is a desk banked, desk based assessment and doesn't actually reflect what we're hearing from residents. And that's, that's the evidence that we need to consider. And there's a regeneration conflict here as well. The, the landowner's own consultation website for this, for this development promotes build to rent development featuring, I'm quoting here, low car usage, secure cycle parking and a home zone where pedestrian movement is prioritised. This temporary use is, is by a separate operator, but on the same land. So it, it doesn't, it still doesn't meet compatibility with DM twenty nine's requirement that temporary uses must not prejudice the implication of implementation of allocated development.
Perhaps if you can just wrap up, give other people a chance to.
Okay, I, I thought we would, we would have an opportunity to outline.
You've spoken more than anyone else here.
I have. Maybe, maybe that's because I, I did more research than anybody.
And maybe it's because other people need a chance to speak as well. So wrap up quickly, please.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not going to be able to vote for this. I'm going to vote against it for the reasons I've set out. Other members can very confidently vote against this because there are many reasons for objecting to it. I did notice, of course, that councillor Davies put some questions to officers that weren't answered. Thank you.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm happy to accept the officer's interpretation of the policies. And I think I, well, I agree with councillor Harper that this is an unbalanced decision. I think you need to bear in mind that it's not like it's an application for a car park out of the blue. Regardless of the fact that the park and ride car parks might be underutilised. If this is not, not used as a car park, there'll be nothing there at all. So I don't think that has any material impact. And I think overall and on balance, it's better that the, the land is used for something pending the expected application rather than just left boarded up with a greater risk of ASB and other sort of undesirable things happening.
Councillor Oliver, and then I'll move to councillor Hampton.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've got many concerns which I don't think can, can be answered. I mean, the county council haven't raised any particular concerns, but some, you know, we can witness them ourselves. In, in terms of the option of driving to the city, I feel that the more parking spaces we have, we are making driving the easy option. And the cabinet member, the county council cabinet member is on record, it's been in the local paper, that he said, use it or lose it with regard to the park and ride. So, you know, they are under threat and we can't afford to be encouraging people to drive any more than they already do into the city. I think if there was provision for people with disabilities, mobility problems, then, you know, that might change things slightly if there was some electric vehicle provision and cycle provision, which secure cycle provision is definitely needed. There's a high rate of bicycle theft in the city. You know, that might put a different slant on it, but at the moment I'm, I'm not minded to vote in favour.
Councillor Hampton.
Thank you. Putting aside any kind of personal views or feelings about parking or how I'd ideally like this site to look. I, I'm still not convinced from the discussion that this doesn't accord with the development plan policies as, as officers have outlined, especially with some of the conditions and the fact it is temporary, minimum tariffs, et cetera. I, I don't really buy what's been said about potentially delaying development from what we've heard about the likely application timescales. And if anything, a viable meanwhile use could be seen to, to, to support this even. And as has been said, I think the fact that there is a, an active use of it, which is likely to deter ASB and other poorer uses is, is on balance a positive thing as well. So, yeah, from, from, I'm really glad we did have a thorough discussion on this, but on the balance, I'll be voting to support it.
Anyone else? Councillor Haines?
Yeah, I have some similar concerns to what some other people have said around the, how this conflicts with our development management policies. I've also, my, some of my concerns about safety have been eased by the comments of the officers in response to my questions, but I still have some around sightlines and the dark patches that are left on there. And I'm concerned that any scheme to light, I'm pointing, sorry, I'm pointing at something that isn't actually up there, Emma. I have. Excellent. Well, yeah, go. I'll check that compliment. I have some concerns, basically, the way, any ways we could improve the dark spots on the site would be, would then cause lighting to be put into people's houses, that there isn't a way to adequately light some corners of that side. Similar concerns I raised with the St Davies box park, actually around sightlines and public safety and particularly women's safety on sites like theirs. However, I do have a bit of a concern that there are multiple people speaking against this application. I don't know whether we've actually formulated a policy compliant plan to get that turned down at this point in time. And I think somebody needs to do that before we can vote to turn it down.
Are you making a proposal, councillor Haines?
Someone needs to, so I might as well. But I think, I think lots of the points I would want to raise to turn that down. I said, for me, it's about lighting and about the, you know, lighting on the site being, causing public safety and around our, around it conflicting with development management policies that are trying to restrain city centre parking, that are trying to promote sustainable travel. I think from what councillor Stuteley's been saying, he may have things to add to that, though, policy wise.
So we haven't actually had a formal proposal as yet.
That was what I was trying to do, sorry.
Can we have it in some concise words that we can all understand?
Hoping for some help with the concise wording. Yes. Yeah.
I'm not entirely sure what councillor Haines is requesting here. Reading the room, I understand that so far that we probably have more people in favour of this than against. So there would be no need to make a proposal apart from additional conditions.
It felt sort of fifty fifty to me.
Make it more acceptable. It, it does, I mean, yes, it, it is, I mean, if we could have an indicative vote.
Either vote or, well, do you, speaking of perhaps some con- conditions, do you have some? I mean, like, for example, when we had our chairs and deputies discussion the other day, I asked about the, the lighting and one of the comments I made was lighting, LED lighting in the blue and white spectrum is often detrimental to nocturnal wildlife. And I do understand from something I've read here, it's now going to be towards the amber spectrum, which overcomes lots of the problems. So do you have any particular conditions that you think could be reasonably placed on this?
I would, I would propose a condition to, for the developer to level and make good the damage to the, the surface of the car park in order to make it accessible. And so that, so that disabled users can access this car park like everybody else. And I think for me, that, that still wouldn't make it acceptable because the principle of the, the, the car park does, for me, doesn't meet the, the criteria of DM twenty eight, twenty nine and other sections, Greater Norwich Local Plan Four also. So I, you know, for, for me, that, that condition would make it more acceptable, but not, not enough to, to tip the balance for me. But it, it might be for other people.
In short, you'd like to condition that the site is made disability friendly.
Yeah, fully accessible, in line with what other car, other car parks of this, this type should be. So that it, so that it more, more accurately meets the quality standard that I, I, I feel that it, it fails on. It fails on other items as well, especially, I think, the, the fact that there are, that there isn't a, a need. And actually, David mentioned earlier that there's no data to, to demonstrate that other car parks are underused. There is, there's no data to demonstrate that this is needed either. So, you know, this is a, this is, this is an issue.
Ask, can we then condition that in a suitable part of the car park where the surface is good, that disability, disabled friendly car parks are, are marked out as, as we have in St Giles Car Park, for example?
I think there probably are, I mean, just in terms of generally the surface of the car park, I think it would be inefficient use of resources to resurface the whole of the car park to make it, you know, completely sealed surface. So I think that would be wasteful, given the temporary period. I think it, you know, if there are concerns that the site, the surface isn't safe, that it's uneven, I think we could condition that a, you know, that there is an inspection to ensure that, you know, the, the surface is level. And I think, as I say, there are probably areas which are more capable of being marked out for disabled users. So that, that could be conditioned, I think. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think what we're just considering is even if you were to identify an area suitable for disabled parking, whether there's suitable access and egress arrangements from those parking spaces to, you know, St Stephen's Road, which I wouldn't be able to, just see the situation there.
If we, if we impose that condition and the developer was not able to meet that condition, presumably the, it just wouldn't be able to go ahead. When you're putting conditions on a consent, there needs to be a reasonable expectation that the developer can actually comply with them. So you shouldn't effectively use conditions to block a development that you're approving? And you misunderstand my. Okay, maybe I do. Those are the question. I, I actually probably sounded like that. What I mean is the, the, the developer would have an option to create a situation where it met that condition. And if they didn't want to, then it wouldn't go ahead. But if, if we condition it, this, this is, this is about making, making the site accessible and therefore meeting, meeting a quality standard that, that it certainly fails on. And therefore it would be, I think it's reasonable to have an expectation that there would be disabled spaces.
I think we, we, we can attach a condition that disabled spaces should be marked out on, 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 on parts of the car park where the surface is, 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 is in better repair, which would be towards the Brazen Gate end of the site. I think I could do that.
And, and, and they would presumably need to be close to an access point for pedestrians or, or wheelchair access.
We would, we would have to try and make sure that we could facilitate that as well. So in that case, I would like to propose that.
I mean, the, the most convenient point of access would be the St Stephen's Road access for both pedestrian, well, pedestrians in particular because egress is ramped. So that would be an obstacle. So I think the, the preference would be to identify an area closest to that St Stephen's Road entrance, which was of a suitable standard to identify disabled parking spaces.
And I imagine that the developer could create a pedestrian access that is suitable for disabled users much more cheaply than resurfacing the car park. That, that, that is in case St Stephen's wasn't a suitable exit point, exit and entrance point for them.
Seems quite clear to me that there is pedestrian access off the road there already. So that's already in existence. All I think the condition needs to ensure is suitably ramped from car park surface up to the footpath to allow access of wheelchairs. Well, how you drop it, I mean.
We, we, sorry, Chad, just, we, we, we can attach a condition which would effect to require parking for people with disabilities to be identified in, within close proximity to the St Stephen's Road access and a scheme for accessing egress from those spaces to be provided to the public highway.
Right, okay. So that's the condition we will put in place. Councillor Oliver.
Chair, can I ask about the possibility of other conditions which might mitigate some concerns? So, for example, cycle storage, sounds like that would be quite easy to implement. I was kind of going to discount electric vehicle charging until I remembered that there's some temporary infrastructure that might be able to be purposed. Plus, presumably when the planning application comes to committee, there will be provision for electric vehicle charging in any car parking space, I think. The other thing as well being, sorry, going back to the road use. You'd be aware that Victoria Street, you can turn right into from St Stephen's Road against the flow of traffic. And then this is the next entrance, isn't it afterwards? So, you know, it, it can be a bit confusing, particularly when it's a temporary arrangement. And I was wondering if there's any facility for the recording concerns or near misses because I understand that county council measurements, you know, sadly only record actual accidents, the not the, the near misses that, that we see far too often.
Bit difficult to record near misses because by the definition of a near miss, people don't tend to report things unless, you know, someone says, reports of, I had a near miss along, you know, St Stephen's Road or whatever. And we've all had near misses on bicycles, cars, et cetera, but we don't necessarily report those. So I don't think that's quite reasonable to do.
Yeah, I suppose it just seems a shame that, you know, people quite often go to social media and discuss these things. So the information's out there, but it's not being collected in a place where it could actually make a difference potentially. But yeah, point taken.
And I'm just make a couple of points on some of councillor Oliver's suggestions. And I'm just make a couple of points on some of um councillor Oliver's suggestions. Um I think we um we can't condition. Electric vehicle charging is the amount of investment. That will be there's there's no power to the site at the moment, has been disconnected since the building was demolished. So to provide that. It would be disproportionate um to the to the for an eighteen month temporary use. Um, we could put a condition on to provide some cycle parking. Um I'm also, I'm I am however mindful that the access arrangements to the car park don't favour cyclists. Um um but notwithstanding that, again, if we could identify some cycle parking close to the St Stephen's Road. Access, then we could potentially do that. Um, I think, I think the chair's probably addressed the points about um the 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 monitoring, so I won't say anything more.
There are plenty on St Stephen's itself.
Plenty what?
Park um cycle parking places. And um I think that's most eh efficient for me to go and park. Where the shops are.
Yeah, you wouldn't want.
I wouldn't park in a car park, no.
No.
As a cyclist.
Right, okay.
Just to be clear, so so far we have discussed some possible conditions, but no formal proposal has yet been made. I just want to make that clear before we go any further.
Right, okay. Councillor Knight, are you going to make the proposal, which I'm I'm guessing is relates to disabled parking? Do you want to formalise that in a nice concise form of words?
Good, excellent. Yes, that's exactly what I'd like to do, yeah. Um. If we can have some sort of um disabled parking on the site, then I would be in mind to vote in favour. Uh so formally, I don't I'm not sure on the exact wording.
Propose a.
I formally propose that condition, yeah.
Okay. Are we need to vote on that proposal?
Second a chair, sorry.
Oh, a seconder.
Yes, a seconder.
Councillor Kane seconding this, so.
Just check very, just to go through the wording of it.
Yeah.
I get that agreed with my planning colleague. So I do have something written down from what members have discussed. And then. I'm gonna pass them with your permission, Chair.
Yep, go go ahead.
So I picked up the point about disabled parking, that disabled condition, sorry, that disabled parking spaces. Are identified on better surface areas with routes identified for access and egress for wheelchair users. On the site close to St Stephen, the St Stephen's Road access, is that acceptable? And then the second one I got, which I don't know, councillor Knight, if you could confirm, and also councillor Kane, seconded, was the identified cycle parking space. Was that something you wish to include or not?
Personally, I would not feel safe with uh parking my bike there, so I would not raise that. No, thank you.
So we'll drop that one. So are we happy with that as a proposal? We're clear on the wording? Quick comment, otherwise we'll be here all day.
Yeah, I'm still a bit concerned that we're conditioning um disabled spaces on better surface. I mean, the the surface would have to be. Suitable for disabled parking. You have you, we can't sort of uh better is just too too vague and um. Legally could be problematic, I think. I think that there are parts of the car park where the surface is effect is 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 suitable for. It's level and surfaced and in in a reasonable state.
We can change that wording?
Well, I I think, sorry, Chair, but I think we're we're the the detail of that final condition, the detailed wording of it, I think, think we've we've. We've captured the.
Spirit.
The spirit of it.
Right, okay. Last word, and then we'll move to vote on this proposal.
I guess, um are we taking uh all um conditions as one or one at a time?
You only had one pose.
Only had one condition imposed.
So.
Disabled parking.
I'd like to add another one, and that is uh following councillor um uh Haines' proposal to improve the lighting. Um to ensure that it is um ensure that it is um uh safe um i- in the in the evening up until eleven o'clock. For for all users.
Can I just make a comment there for me? One of the things I've discovered about LED lighting in the blue white spectrum and amber. LED lighting from experience of lighting in my own ward is that the amber lighting is far more diffuse. Creates less intense shadows. So um whereas the blue white seems to create. Intense pools of darkness, shall we say. So I have every confidence that uh. The amber spectrum lighting is going to be, because it's more diffuse, it's going to create less intense dark spots.
Um I think it it would be up to councillor Haines whether she wants to push this point, because it would still not make it acceptable uh for me and. I I can, should remind um members that even if they've proposed, made a proposal for a condition, they don't have to vote for it if they're still minded to. Um still minded to vote against. Um and there's one more thing I'd like to explore, please, and this is the last condition I would like to explore and. Um and that is, um we've heard from residents about the um the right hand turn from St Stephen's Road into. Into the site, but um residents have also said, and this is something that everybody will know that's ever used that road. Uh during the day, um it is heavily used um as a pedestrian route for for students. Um and they are in danger of of cars um both turning left and turning right, especially if they think they're not going to turn right. And they continue to walk that way, there is a danger there. So I just wondered if there is any way that we can improve that situation, whether. Um officers have um anything in mind that would improve, because I think that is a major issue. It's very, very serious. Um and it is an accident waiting to happen.
Okay, um there's a couple of points that I'd like to come back on. First of all, the issue about lighting. Um as I think I said, actually during questions or debate, I forget which one it was, there is always already a proposed condition about lighting where we could actually look at. And I think I I I said this, that we could actually look at the detail of where the lighting heads were pointed and the precise. Um positioning of the um currently three proposed lighting units. So I. I I I feel that the 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 concerns that members are raising about lighting could be covered by that existing condition. Um the point about the um um pedestrian safety at the entrance. I mean, um highways did look at that issue and they've not made any 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 recommendation and and I I.
That's why they clearly, they clearly haven't covered it properly, because um that is well, that is used by a.
And no one's saying it's not used.
It it's, we can't, we can only determine this application, we're not uh conducting highways issues. If you wish to raise that with highways, raise it with a county council. I'm happy to take it forward on your behalf.
It's the necessity, sorry Chair, it's also the necessity of the condition as well, because there's there's a lot of things that we actually might like. To put on consents, but in order to kind of meet the tests for the conditions, that one of uh one of them is it's necessary and. Acting on the advice of 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 county with their statutory responsibility for road safety, they're not identifying this. As a a a as a con- as something that requires a condition. Um. So, in all honesty, Chair, my advice to the committee is that that condition is not necessary.
Yeah, I would agree.
Um okay, and may I apologize to the uh committee for getting animated about that particular issue. I do believe it is a serious issue and I do believe that. Um we should have given it more consideration. Um and I'm just disappointed.
As I said, councillor, if you want to raise that as a highways issue, I'm more than happy to take it forward on your behalf.
Thank you. I will follow that up after the meeting.
Okay, so we need to vote on this condition concerning disabled parking. We're all content with. How we've heard the wording on this. Uh is your hand up to vote?
Sorry, Chair.
Okay, voting on on this condition.
Chair, sorry, just before we, just before we get to that, I just wanted to double check whether the the proposal is and second are accepting the word suitable on the suitable surface point. Yep, that's fine. Just need to do that formally.
So we're voting on the disabled.
Uh sorry, Chair, if it's, it, I just need to be clear, is you vote, because usually when you add a condition. It's just voting to approve the item as a whole, are you just?
We're just voting on the condition and then we'll vote on the proposal. Right, okay. So we're voting on the condition first of all. People are happy with this condition? Right, okay. We now come to voting on a substantive item, which is to. Uh approve or disapprove of the application of this as a temporary. Car parking facility in the city. I don't think we need any more question or debate on that. So we will move to the vote. So those in favour, please?
Sorry, Chair, we just need to be a bit more formal on that, because we've done that for the amendment. We need to formally propose and second the motion.
Okay.
Because we did the amendment.
I formally proposed the uh item. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Lubbock?
Thank you, Chair.
So we do now need to move to the vote. So please, raise of hands or not raise of hands?
One, two, three, six.
And those opposed?
One, two, three, any abstent.
And do we have any abstentions?
One.
That's carried.
Okay, so that is carried. So I thank everyone's patience and councillor Sutney, I I did listen to your impassioned arguments. And the arguments presented to by councillor Davis as well, and I certainly weighed them up in my considerations. Okay, so thanks very much. We'll take a short break now before we uh move on to the second item. Yeah, all here, councillor Harper's not returning. As she said earlier, she um had a another engagement and won't be able to stay for the whole. Session, but we are core, we have all of our councillors here. So we move on to the next item. Which is application two four stroke zero zero eight two six strike F, which is number four. Wall Road and um uh Adam, I believe you're introducing this.
It's, I'm Sam Walker, sorry, Adam's Adam's on next for the.
Oh, my apologies.
Chairman, sorry, just to interrupt very briefly before we get started, just need to update, very brief update on the advice given earlier. So in the constitution, it does say that councillors should leave the meeting where they have uh where they speak on an application. So I'm just updating advice and I've informed councillor Knight accordingly. It's um just as explanation, it's not a rule that I've come across in ten years, so hence why. Initial view was that. So just to keep, make sure everyone's clear on that. Thank you, Chair.
No worries. Right, okay.
Thank you.
I agree.
So Four Wall Road is a residential dwelling in the north of the city of um is. Close to junction with Sprouston Road. Um to the north of the site, approximately two hundred fifty metres is the Shipfield Sprouston Road. Uh district centre. To the east would be Mousehold Heath beyond those houses and to the south goes towards North City Centre. Um so the, get to the next slide. The existing property on the site is a semi-detached three-bedroomed house. Probably from possibly the nineteen thirties. Um it has a existing rear conservatory and a garage in the garden. And it has a large side garden, as can be seen on the site plan there. Um this proposal is for the subdivision of the site. And the construction of a new dwelling. As part of that, the existing garage is proposed to be demolished and the, although it doesn't require consent. Uh the existing conservatory on the rear of the property is to be demolished to facilitate bin and bike storage for that uh development. Uh go to the next slide. So the proposed is for a single dwelling. As you can see here, we've got um. Off-street parking for two vehicles, that is one vehicle per plot, both with electrical uh charging points. Uh that is policy compliant with North City Council standards. Uh the proposed dwelling is a two-bedroomed property. Uh under current technical technical space standards, the the building can facilitate a two-bedroom property for three persons. Um each property is able to provide a rear private curtilage garden with bin storage for three bins each property. Uh bike storage and space for washing lines. Um. We're at committee today because we've got um two objections from neighbouring residents. Uh the objections relate to overlooking, overshadowing um and outlook. Um and out of character development for the area. Um the property is in a critical drainage catchment area. The proposal includes. Um less hard standing in private rear garden, but also um. So um such drainage within the drive uh for the vehicle storage to to overcome surface water drainage issues. Um as a self-build property, this would be biodiversity net gain exempt. That would need to be secured for a period of three years by condition. Um so that the builder remains resident in that. If within that time. The self-build uh occupant sells the house, then we need to comply with biodiversity net gain. Uh requirements as standard. This is caught by nutrient neutrality impacts as a lot of residential dwellings in our. Uh area have been, or as all have been. Um the uh applicant has submitted the calculation for the amount. Of impact that it should have and secured credits with Norfolk Environmental Mental Credits for the correct sum. We've consulted Natural England, who have agreed that upon purchase of the credits, that will be sufficient to mitigate against um. Neutrality impacts within the catchment. It's worth noting that at the moment, North City Council does not currently able to demonstrate a five-year housing land supply. And under those circumstances, the NPPF uh recommends that planning permission should be granted without delay unless the application. Policies in the NPPF provide clear reason for refusal in assessment of the case. And there are no overriding constraints or significant adverse impacts that would demonstrably outweigh the benefits. Um. If we go through the photos, I think, uh so this is the site, the property on the right is. Uh Four Wall Road, there, Two Wall Road attached to it, and the property to the left is Six Wall Road. Beyond the, it's probably above the garage, you can see the chimney stack is three hundred and twelve Sprouston Road neighbouring rest and there. Um go to the next slide. So this is from Wall Road looking into the plot there with the garage to be demolished, trees at the back. You can see there's a. A large brick wall at the rear of the site on the boundary with an area of trellis above it and then trees above that. And then the other photo is standing where that wall is, looking back out towards Wall Road. You can see Four Wall Road on the left. The garage could be demolished at the foreground on the left on that photo and then Six Wall Road on the right. And then over the other side of the road was a former school playing field, which I think probably in the last five or so years was developed for townhouses. Possibly longer, I haven't checked on that date for that. Uh we go to the next slide. So this is slightly wider perspective. Uh the top photo is from Wall Road looking west towards Six Wall Road. And then the bottom photo is uh higher up the hill looking east towards Four Wall Road. Probably notice from this that the topography. Of the road at this location goes down to the east towards Sprouston Road, so it's a a slope down towards it. Um got a few photos which just so the general character of the area is a diverse sort of mixture of, oh this actually, so this is three hundred and twelve. Um Sprouston Road there. And if you look through, I was trying to get perspective of the relationship between. The application site and three hundred and twelve. So you can see the site and you can see the um trees in between the two. So the tree at the, on the top left photo on the left-hand side is at the back of our application site there. And so three hundred and twelve was previously subdivided into three properties. So that's the original property, then there's two more going north. Up Sprouston Road. And I just want to mention, as in the updates report, I previously mentioned about the TPOs in three hundred and twelve. The TPOs actually are now in three hundred and twelve B, but because when the TPO was served, it's in three hundred and twelve overall sites. So they are. The TPO trees are separated from our application site by three properties. So they're in the north of the site and we have a. Image on the updates report which shows where the TPI are treating in dotted outlines. That's beneficial. So that was an update from the original report. Um so I think we've got some photos of the wider context as a diversity of areas, just showing the context of separation between properties. So I've just got a few photos that demonstrate that character, because this is one of the issues that came up about proximity of development adjacent. And where there's existing side windows. So I think we've possibly got three slides of those. So you can see there's a different characteristics of brickwork, uh pantard roofs, render, uh I think the previous photo had a gabled roof. One of these are hipged roofs. So there's a wide variety of character of properties on this street. Um. Yeah, so the recommendation is for approval in accordance with the conditions that we've set out. In. Paragraph ninety seven. There. I won't, I won't run through the conditions individually unless required.
Okay, thank you very much. We have two speakers on this. Our first speaker is a Mr Savage. Mrs Savage, oh Stevie's a, right, a Stevie next type Stevie. Yeah, no, yeah. My apologies. You have three minutes.
My wife and I live at Six Wall Road, next door to number four. And our objections to this development is on the grounds that it would have an overbearing impact on us and our property. Policy DM2 ensuring satisfactory living and working conditions. Our house is unusual amongst 1930s semi-detached houses in that the side aspect that faces the proposed two-storey house is as important as the front. The only window in our second bedroom would look directly into its side wall. Not only blocking our light, but also removing our view of the Mousehold Heath skyline. This room is used daily as a home office and sewing room and bedroom. On this side, two downstairs windows and a clear glazed door look out onto a sunny courtyard garden. Allowing our living area to receive light throughout the day. And whilst many semi-detached houses are close to their neighbours, there are very few of these with bedrooms and major windows on their side aspect. The proposed two-story house is extremely close to our boundary and would leave our indoor living space and courtyard garden in deep shadow. I urge you to consider that a one-story building or house extension would be more appropriate. We were very concerned that the applicant was advised not to mention the application to us and that we only found out about it by chance. As no consultation letters were received by any neighbours prompting a second consultation. Also that a previous pre-planning application in February 2022 was met with a comprehensive response from Marie Hammond, the then planning officer. That any application for such a proposal is likely to result in a refusal of planning permission. And you are not encouraged to pursue it any further. Furthermore, the detached form and modest plot size of new dwelling would not positively respond to or respect or enhance the character and local distinctiveness of the area. Enclosing the gap between numbers four and six would impinge on their character and amenity. Whilst also harming the wider street scene. And the new dwelling would therefore be considered unacceptable and contrary to policies JCS2, DM3 and DM12B. I would like to find out what has changed since this advice. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. And we now have Mr Garnum. Again, you have three minutes.
Good morning Chair and members of the committee. My name is James Garnum from Kay Garnum Design, speaking today as agent on behalf of the applicant, Mr Briggs. In support of this proposal of Four Wall Road. The application seeks permission for the subdivision of the existing plot and the erection of a single two-story self-build dwelling. The existing house will remain with minor alterations not forming part of this application. The proposal has been carefully designed to respect the established character of Wall Road, which features a variety of homes in both scale and size. The new dwelling is modest in size at 79 square metres and reflects the proportions and roof heights of the neighbouring properties. The proposed red and buff brickwork terracotta tiles and aluminium windows are high-quality materials that integrate seamlessly with the surrounding streetscape. From the outset, we have worked closely with planning officers and consultees to ensure that the scheme fully aligns with planning policy. The Highways Authority is satisfied that the amended layout, which provides one parking space per dwelling, both with EV charges and secure storage for bins and cycles. Environmental protection raised no objection, confirming that the proposed air source heat pump meets required noise standards. The tree protection officer and Natural England responses are acknowledged with appropriate conditions proposed to safeguard landscape and biodiversity matters. I wish to raise one point of clarification for our members regarding the tree constraints referenced in the report. I must clarify that the trees adjacent to our site within three one two Sprouston Road do not fall under TPO order one three five. And there are no tree preservation order constraints directly affecting our proposal. The proposal makes efficient use of underutilised garden land with a sustainable urban location, close to public transport and local services. It contributes to Norwich's housing supply, particularly importance given that the council cannot currently demonstrate a five-year housing land supply. Just to move on to a couple of points made by the objector. As part of the application, we submitted a technical note dated the 29th of May. Reviewing the impact on daylight to the existing property known as Six Wall Road. The proposed dwelling and Four Wall Road were not required to be assessed as there are no principal windows requiring assessment. The method of assessing the impact of daylight and sunlight was through the 25-degree test. The 25-degree test provides a method of considering the impact of design on windows in the neighbouring properties which face the proposed development. The test is only applied to principal windows in habitable rooms such as living rooms, dining rooms and bedrooms. The test is not applied to secondary windows in habitable rooms. And neither is applied to windows in stairwells, halls, landings, kitchens, conservatories, utilities or bathrooms.
And I'll have to ask you to wind up. You've had your three minutes.
Yes, um, yep, fine. So yeah, basically if I could just ask the case officer later on to just go through the letter that we said that shows the 25-degree rule. Otherwise, in conclusion, the application fully addresses environmental and technical requirements, including.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, we know that's our speakers. Officers, do you have anything to follow up on these?
Just to come back on a few points, points of clarification. And the pre-application response that was referred to by the objector. Firstly, that related to a different proposal on this site. And the pre-app response provided doesn't need to prejudice any decision made by this committee. And the, with regards to the BRE, we're not going to go through the building research establishment. And calculations that the applicant's agent just referred to. But if members do have any questions regarding that, we can, we can try and answer those.
Okay, so we now do move on to questions from our councillors. So does anyone have any questions here? Councillor Kane was first by Whisker, followed by councillor Laws.
Okay, um, yeah. Wrote a couple of questions on my phone earlier. I'm just trying to find them. So if maybe, uh, there was someone to go first whilst I find my questions. And then I'll come back afterwards if that's okay.
We'll move on to councillor Laws.
Thank you Chair. Just a couple of points of information really that may be in the papers, but just to clarify for my benefit. If I can refer to the plan, she was up on, yeah, the plan's up on the screen now. And what is the distance between the, as you look at it, the left-hand side of the, the new proposed dwelling and the boundary? And then also the distance between that left-hand side and the right-hand side of the number six, if you know what I mean?
Is. He's, so in the report, uh, I'll find the paragraph, it does about fifty-five. And so I haven't put the distance between the proposed plot and its boundary. But I have put the distance between the proposed plot and the number six wall road. So it's 4.5 metres at the tightest point at the, so that's at the rear of the plot. And then at the front of the plot where you've got the step in, that is 6.9 metres separation. It looks that the boundary was tapered. I think that the, so I had the dimension, so the, the distance between the two properties. The number four wall road and proposed is four, is two metres. So I would the, say that the side boundary is probably about approximately 1.2 metres there. But I haven't measured that. That's basing it on the other dimensions on site.
Righto. Have you got your question now councillor Kane?
Um, I couldn't find it, but I can, I think basically remember some of them. I've got a couple. So I'll just ask one for now and see if mine come up there again. So obviously they've done the 25-degree test, which I believe is a sort of, it's used as advisory, right? It's, it's not part of our planning plan and our planning plan essentially overrides it. And this has been done in regards to sunlight, but also DM2 is about overshadowing. And so has there been any kind of looking into how overshadowing regardless of sunlight is going, would be detrimental on the property?
And so the BRE guidance sort of is about, so sunlight and diffuse light that is obtained to the window. So achieves a good level of daylight within the, the, the room that it's assessing. So it's not about, it's not just about whether you can see sunlight, it's about how much light gets within the room. So the 25-degree rules applied to that first floor bedroom window and that was deemed acceptable. The windows on the ground floor are not primary windows, so they did not pass the 25-degree rule. But the rooms downstairs have front-facing, rear-facing windows or serve something like a WC or entrance hall. So it's the top window that was assessed and it's about diffuse light as well as, as sunlight on that same.
Righto. Councillor Oliver was next.
Thank you Chair. That's, I'm sorry, this possibly is reiterating that same point, but I just wondered if we could have some confirmation about the different windows and some importance that we attach to different windows and different parts of the house. And the use of the rims that the windows illuminate because I've come across this before. I'm just sort of struggling to remember the detail. Where you have a bedroom, I believe that's going to be considered secondary. But nowadays, you know, it's, it's quite usual to work from home, isn't it? So it's not just that the person will be going in there, you know, rims have more use than they used to. So are we able to take that into consideration? Because loss of view and loss of daylight for a home office is different, isn't it? To, um, yeah, to bedroom usage. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, that room was taken into account, I'd say secondary room, but it was taken into account as it's the only window serving that room. So that assessment was made that the level of light achieved there was within the guideline set out by BRE. So it wasn't considered as a secondary room. The rooms, so in, if we start with Four Wall Road. To an extent, you've got a stairwell and an understairs cupboard which had like windows to them. So those ones are, really are secondary spaces. So they're not assessed. And then with regard to Six Wall Road, whilst the property at the moment benefits from an open space where they are able to gain light through a, a side access door or secondary windows or windows to spaces that are secondary spaces. We, we don't assess those in, to the same extent. So is the bedroom upstairs was assessed as a room that is used and was considered acceptable within the guidelines.
Councillor Stuteley was next.
Um, thank you. So in other committees, previous history is taken into account as material to the application. Given that the pre-application advice has been submitted as, as evidence, if you like, in this case, why would it be excluded?
So pre-application advice requests are confidential and they're not part of the public register. And having been submitted as, as part of the papers for this application, that's useful, useful background information that we would have had anyway. But it doesn't form a decision of the council. And there is always a caveat at the end of that pre-application response that specifically says that, that this is the advice of officers and it cannot prejudice any future decision made by Norwich City Council. And had we made a previous decision on this site on a planning application, that would be an entirely different matter. And that would be a material planning consideration that we would need to take into account in the assessment of this application. Pre-application advice requests are entirely different.
Okay, so just to confirm, it's the stage of the process that makes the difference here. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Lubbock.
Yes, thank you. In paragraph fifty-seven, it says that there's only one window associated with that room. The bedroom come sewing room and work room. And then the last sentence refers to a skylight. Is that in the same room?
Sorry, no, that, that, I didn't mean that as in Velux. I meant light from the sky. Sorry, I didn't, that's my, my use of words. I apologise for that. I meant as in sky, light from the sky. This is my badly worded, sorry, rather than the Velux roof light type of thing. So there is just the one window. If the photos that David's put on the screen, on the bottom right one, you can probably see it clearest. There's that window there, there. And there's, there is no skylight roof light, as it were, within, within the roof space in there. There is just that single, that single window serving that room. And I apologise for the way that I worded it.
Okay, good clarification there. Any more questions? So we turn to councillor Stuteley.
Um, thank you. So we've heard from the resident at Six Wall Road. And that the, the property is going to be close up to the, the boundary there. And that the outlook from the, the windows at the bottom on the side of the house are for them primary windows. Just again, just for clarification in case I missed it, are those windows in rooms that have dual aspect? And therefore secondary to your assessment? And also in regard to those windows, to what degree and weight should we give the loss of outlook to those, those spaces as well as light? Thank you.
And so the windows downstairs are, so it's a side access door. So you've got the primary door, you can see from the front. So the door, there's a door which is a side access door and then.
Is there a better photo of that side?
Uh, so. And yeah, we've got the side access door, then the door to the right, I believe, was the, the homeowner is here. So would you like them to clarify what those rooms serve? Was that appropriate to do?
Chair's decision.
Yeah, we, a bit of clarification from that, from our cops. Yeah, we'd like to just step forward and use the microphone. That way it's picked up by the YouTube video.
It's on, isn't it? Yeah. The downstairs windows go into the stairwell and into the little corridor into, there's a bathroom off it and the corridor into the kitchen. But what we've done is fully glazed all the doors. Because we're a tree-lined road, you can see all those trees in front of us. We rely on a lot of that side light to light, to light the house. And that's why this is really such a worry for us. So, so although technically they're going into hallways, it's actually the light is then what goes into the sitting room and into the dining room to give light to the house.
Thank you very much. Any more questions from anyone? I see councillor Kane.
Yeah, just a quick one. I, obviously I appreciate the main reason that you've done the multiple houses on the, this street is to show the difference in character. But there is also the thing of the house moving much, much closer to number six. And the, the, you know, other houses on the street have a similar gap in them. The complaint and sort of suggested that their house was quite different to others in those side windows. And I wondered whether there has been any sort of evidence of whether the other houses that are similarly spaced. any sort of evidence of whether the other houses that are similarly spaced have that same light issue.
Um, whilst I appreciate, I don't know the floor plans of all of the houses down the street, but there are numerous bungalows, or there are bungalows, I don't want to overuse it, there are bungalows adjacent to two storey properties that have side windows where you could imagine that within bungalows, they're going to have less, um, additional lights or areas or, or secondary rooms space will be taken by. And there are other properties that have numerous windows in the same sort of way on, on the side of their house, um, which to me, um, indicates the same type of living environment as, as the situation we're in this circumstance.
Can I just add to that? The, ultimately, our assessment on this point comes down to the fact that there are no primary living spaces on the ground floor that are not, that would be impacted by this development, that do not have secondary windows, which are either front or rear facing, which will not be impacted. And that the first floor bedroom, an assessment has been carried out, which, um, which advises us that the impact on that bedroom window will be acceptable by a commonly used, um, uh, assessment tool.
I'll go to councillor Hampton and I'll return to a question from councillor Stuteley.
Uh, thank you. Just coming back to the windows, primary second nature, again, um, I, I can understand what's being said about the difference between the bedroom and the usage of the rooms on the ground floor, but from what we've just heard about how the setup is relatively unique in that they may still kind of give a more, um, useful source of light than most room, um, usages of that sort, not articulating that very well, but is that something we can take into consideration? All those definitions quite rigid and just a quick one, um, uh, in one of his speeches, loss of view was mentioned. Am I right in my understanding that that's not a material consideration?
So yes, we can take into account the, our policy doesn't strictly apply BRE guidance. So by failing the BRE test, that's not a, that's not a definitive answer. However, it's a very useful tool in helping us come to a conclusion on the impact on any particular room. So, so yes, you could take a different view, is my answer. Um, on your second question, which was?
A view of a now sold, uh, material, not, is that right?
Yes, you're correct. Uh, a, a private view is not a material planning consideration, outlook however is. Um, I would just like to reiterate the point as well. Um, as Sam said in his presentation, the, um, council can currently demonstrate less than a five year housing land supply and that puts us in a position where, which, which is a relatively new position for us. Um, that puts us in a position where paragraph eleven D of the National Planning Policy Framework kicks in and that tells us that we should approve application, that we should aim to approve applications unless there are very clear reasons why not. So that does tilt the balance in these sorts of situations. Anything which provides new housing, we have to bear that in mind in our decision making.
Right, councillor Stuteley, we're going to return to you.
Um, thank you. Uh, my question's been answered, thank you.
Do we have any more questions from members? Okay, we move into the realm of debate. Um, does anyone have anything they wish to comment concerning this?
Um, just that, um, uh, this application, um, it's quite finely balanced, actually, and I've heard what officers have had to say. Um, I'm finding myself, um, coming down with the, the objector here because I, it, it appears to me that this house is set up, um, for the, uh, current environment and the environment that was created in the nineteen thirties when it was, when it was probably built. So I think, uh, a, a, a new dwelling here, um, will affect, um, outlook, um, sufficiently to, to, uh, uh, for, for me to, to, to go with a, with a voting against. Um, I think the, um, that the house itself or the property that's proposed is, is, is pretty uninspiring from a design point of view. Uh, not that that would tip, tip the balance, so, but I think all things considered, um, because of the, uh, the objection from the, um, uh, number six wall road being quite compelling, uh, I will vote against. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Kane, followed by councillor Oliver, uh, followed by councillor Hampton.
Uh, yeah, I'm feeling minded the same way. So, um, uh, well, I appreciate that the, um, twenty five, uh, degree, uh, BRE testing has been done. Um, it's technically acceptable, um, but the guidelines are advisory, not definitive. Um, I think the site would become too constrained. Um, the, it would, the exist, the new site would be, be very close, um, having an overcast, oh, having, sorry, having, having constrained and overbearing, um, on their outlook. So I think under DM two, um, I have material reasons to vote against and that's why.
Uh, David.
Can I just sound a note of caution, um, to members? Um, it's been mentioned that the decision is finely balanced. Laura has, or Sam and Laura have, have both mentioned the, um, that we can't demonstrate a five year housing land supply. If you think that the decision is finely balanced, then you should be going the other way and approving it because the contribution that this property makes, unless you, unless you don't think it's finely balanced and you think the impact upon, um, that the neighbouring property is so significant that you would actually still refuse it, then, um, but if you think it's, if you think, under normal circumstances, the decision is finely balanced, then under the circumstances where we cannot demonstrate five year housing land supply, the contribution that this property makes to that land supply, albeit small, is one that could push you the other way. And you just need to be aware of that in your decision making processes.
Uh, councillor Hampton was next. There was someone else, it was councillor Oliver, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a point of, um, discussion or debate, but some, I suppose, just looking at things in a holistic way, I just wanted to say that it's, um, a shame that, um, we could end up losing trees because of directions of light and the amenity they provide and just that everything has a knock on effect. I suppose it's just a, you know, it's not a complaint, it's a general comment on, um, planning laws, I guess. Things aren't necessarily looked at in a holistic way and we don't have the capacity to, the power to do that.
There's no trees being proposed to be lost in, in, as part of this application, just to confirm. That, that, to confirm, there's no trees to be removed as part of this application.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I was talking about, um, the, um, the light, um, on, um, six, um, wall road, you know, I'm not suggesting anybody's about to, you know, it's a kind of principle that if, and I'm sure it's things that councillors will have heard, um, before, that, um, you know, whilst we love trees, you also need light in your home and just how those things, um, can conflict, yeah.
Councillor Hampton.
Yeah, thank you. This, for, for the reasons people have said, finding this a really difficult one, because we've heard that it's technically acceptable, we've heard the sort of testimonies of kind of on the ground, actually, the, the maybe slightly increased impact that would have. Um, so yeah, to use a phrase again, it feels quite finely balanced, but I, I was going to say very similarly, but I, with the five year land supply not met to make a sound decision, this might just end up being a difficult one. I'm sort of on, on the edge of voting in favour because of that kind of overarching sort of consideration, which is really difficult in this case, because I can see it is going to be a considerable change for neighbours and it is going to have an impact. But from the information and the, the, the things we can, uh, are allowed to feed into our decision making, I, I think that's the way I'm going to have to go on this one, which is tough. Um, and yeah.
Uh, councillor Stuteley had another point of debate and I think councillor Knight was itching to say something.
Um, thank you. I just to respond to David, I, I thank, thank you for that clarification because I think it was quite important, but, um, I had taken it into account already and it is only one and we need, we need thousands and the government need one and a half million. So, um, this is only one, so I have taken that into account. Thank you. Just to, just to add to that, it wasn't just the, uh, the, the two items that I said, I think the, the street scene is going to be affected by this property as well. Thank you.
And yes, I just wanted to add that, um, I, I don't particularly think it's finely balanced and I will be voting against.
Any other points of debate? I'll go to councillor Kane and then we'll move the, uh, item.
Yeah, um, I was also going to say that I, I don't think it is finely balanced. I think it very clearly has a detrimental effect, um, and does very little about housing stock, if nothing. Um, I just, the, the sort of side point, um, that the, uh, the object brought up about not receiving any notice or anything like that. Um, I, is, I just wondered if I could just know how our processes usually work and whether there's been a mistake there. And if there is, it can be looked on into because obviously we don't want it happening again.
Um, yeah, I'll come back on that. So the consultation went out as standard with neighbour letters at the beginning of the application period. Um, but we were notified at a later date that neighbours hadn't received those letters. So we have record of all of the houses that we sent those to. We don't deliver them personally as a, a council, so we have no knowledge of whether they have actually been received. We received two, um, when we had the first, um, indication that it hadn't been received, we asked if that had been the case for anyone else, whether it was just an individual property. Uh, so we had two properties said that they hadn't received the consultation. So as a point of, um, process, we then ran another consultation and then made contact to ensure that that one had been received. Um, so the consultations were carried out in an attempt or as, as process. And when we found out that it hadn't, um, been successful, we then carried it out again to ensure that we did cover process.
Uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, it's, no, 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 this is down now, down to, uh, our councillors, I'm sorry. Right, do we have any more points of debate? If not, then I will, uh, propose, uh, the motion, which is to recommend approval. Do I have a second for that? I do have a second now. Right, so now we do move to the vote. Those who are voting in favour of this application, please raise your hands. And those voting against this application, please raise your hands. And any abstentions? One abstention. Right, uh, it does come down to, to me as chair. Um, I did vote in favour of this. It is, in my opinion, quite a finely balanced thing. I've been here drawing diagrams myself and, uh, so I will be casting my casting vote in favour of the application. Thank you very much. So that is. Uh, I'm. We will, we will note it. Yeah, yeah. Letters from two. Right, okay, that is noted. Right, okay, so that is approved. We now move on to the final item this, this afternoon, which is Silver Road. Yeah, yeah, not a problem. Yeah, absolutely. Right. Okay, we now move on to item two, five, zero, zero, seven, six, five, stroke F, which is seventy one Silver Street. I did say Silver Road, but I'll correct myself, Silver Street Norwich. And, um, it is, Adam, is that right?
It's correct, yeah.
I got the name wrong before, my apologies.
No, step on.
Right, so this is application twenty five, double O, seven, six, five, slash F for seventy one Silver Street in the Sewell Ward. It's a single story rear extension, the replacement entrance porch to the front of the property. So I'm going to begin by showing the property as it is, for, for the context, then I'll explain the proposal in more detail. This is the view of, uh, the rear of the property from the north elevation. Uh, actually, we can go back one, please, David. So explain the situation. So as you can see, the, the front of the property fronts, uh, Silver Street to the south and the rear backs onto Nightingale Lane, across from which is the rear of Woodhouse Street. And then, yeah, next slide, please, David. Thank you. This is a view from, from north elevation, taken from Nightingale Street, showing, uh, the rear. The features to note at this point are the existing, uh, rear extension, the flat roof to join onto the one of number seventy three, and then the rear outcrop, uh, behind that, which is an original feature. Next slide, please. This is a close up of three windows which will become relevant later on. This is for number sixty nine, so this is the other side of the fence. Number one, uh, the one nearest is a glazed door and then numbers two and three are glazed windows. The fourth window I haven't highlighted because it's obscure glazed, so isn't considered. Next slide, please. These are a series of photos I took, um, during a site visit illustrating, uh, the different forms of extensions that are present, both on the back of Silver Street and on the back of, um, a Woodhouse Street from Night, Nightingale Lane. So as you can see, there are different roof forms, different heights, so that's the, they're not, not uniform in appearance. So next slide, please. Okay, this is a view of the front of the property, showing, uh, the existing porch, which is a back to front, do you call, it's a back to front extension, lean to extension. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is just a view of the general street scene. Uh, the second porch from the right is seventy one Silver Streets, but that's what the, the street looks like. Most of the, uh, the reason I took this photo, most of the, the porches have lean to roofs. Next slide, please. These are the elevations of the existing, um, yeah, the elevations, yeah. Next slide, please. These are the plans of the existing. Next slide, please. Okay. And these are the elevations of, uh, the proposed. So I'll do the, the porch first. This has a pitched roof or side to side roof, uh, three metres in height, is of brick construction with tiles to match existing. The next element is, is the rear extension itself, which is also of brick construction with, uh, a parapet wall and then a, a mono pitched roof, which is, uh, tiles to match existing. Let's check my notes. So as you can see, it starts off with a flat roof, which is slightly behind the parapet wall and then descends towards the boundary to a two point three metre height, which is what we typically consider acceptable for, for an infill extension of Victorian terrace property in the city. Um, we have received, uh, four letters of representation during the reconsultation, reconsultation period with concerns over outlook and, uh, design, um, amenity and design. Uh, we, we considered that the revisions to the two point three metre heights, uh, by the boundary and the, the stepping in by zero point one metres to make this, uh, these, uh, outlook and overshadowing impacts reduced to a, an acceptable level. And then the point of design, um, although it's a, a novel, um, roof alignment, it's ultimately a, a combination of two conventional forms, flat and pitched, and these are found across either side of Silver Streets and Woodhouse Street. Next slide, please. This is, uh, the, the plans proposed. It shows more fully the roof light, um, on the flat roof as well as the three on the mono pitched roof and shows fully the, the integration of the two, of, of the existing extension and the infill extension, which ought to be, uh, incorporated as one. So I, I therefore, um, urge, uh, the, the committee to approve, uh, this application with the conditions and informative recommended in the report. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Um, now, we, um, have, um, an extra speaker this morning, which we've allowed discretion of the chair, which is a Mr Amis. So I'll invite Mr Amis first of all.
Is this, just press this?
Yeah, and you have three minutes. Yeah, and you have three minutes.
Anyone to see the size and context of the development. Thirdly, I'm also going to make a broader point about the neighbours' objections and concerns over larger terrace developments in the NR three area. Firstly, the factual error. Please see page six, bullet point four of the report. The planning department has noted that the current flat rift extension at number seventy one is two point eight metres high. This is incorrect. The flat roof at seventy one is approximately two point four metres high, so a full seventy centimetres lower than stated. That's wrong by a considerable amount. And will give the impression that the proposed flat rift extension is actually less of a change than will really be the case. This will likely colour any assessment of the new proposal proposals height and length in a more favourable light in terms of the loss of light. To my second point, the architects' plans do not show the neighbouring properties. This makes it hard to see how the proposal will fit in in the area. When you see the properties together, sixty nine, seventy one, seventy three, I feel the objections about size, scale and light loss make more sense. Here I was going to show an illustration, but I can't. The scale illustration was created to show that the houses in a row and show the gap between sixty nine and seventy one before and after, plus the relationship between seventy three, seventy one and sixty nine in height terms. And this would basically show that the roof line will do that. So in looking into this, in looking into this interesting interesting issue online, I came across Norwich City Council's very useful Extensions to Houses PDF. This is squarely aimed at the public and notes in its section about rear and side extension that a reasonable gap should be retained between houses to ensure adequate levels of light are maintained and to avoid a tunneling effect. I've asked several people what a tunneling effect would mean in this context, and what I commonly hear back is dark, enclosed, narrow, overbearing. I think these are pretty common interpretations, nothing out of the ordinary. On page ten, point thirty three of the report, the planning department has remarked of the tunneling effect raising the object neighbours' objections. The proposed extension is not considered to create the tunneling effect upon one rear window. Mentioned in relation to outlook and DN two, this effect has already been created by the forms of number sixty nine and seventy one and will not be significantly excavated by the proposed works. To me, this statement is unclear. The rear extension covers the entire width and runs the entire length of the passageway. It couldn't really get any closer. So if there is currently a tunneling effect without the building over the passageway, won't this application excavate the problem? Also in relation to some of sixty nine, it also it only mentions one window. What about the other two grand rear windows affected? Does it live up to the standard that the planning note sets about a reasonable gap? And then I was going to show two illustrations that show the change in.
If you can just wind up now, you've had your three minutes.
The picture of the left. To sum up, in short, I and many of the neighbours think that the effect of proposed rear extension on number sixty nine would be would create the effect of poorly lit, narrow, north facing passage space with incorrect measurement regarding the height of the report. I'm not confident this point, but the loss of light has been properly addressed.
Thank you very much. Um, councillor Knight, you've disqualified yourself from the proceedings, but you do wish to speak, so we'll listen to you now.
Do you have a statement from the applicant? Would you like to take that first or?
Yes, we will.
I can hear it.
Okay, I'm going to read out a statement which has been submitted on behalf of the applicant. Dear committee, I have submitted a written statement to be read out on my behalf as I am unable to attend the meeting in person due to work commitments. While I intended to keep this statement entirely objective, I feel it's important to share some personal context. Without it, the only personal perspectives considered may be those expressed in the objections submitted. My name is Adam, not to be confused with the case officer Adam. I am thirty one years old and I have lived in Norwich my entire life. I work as a nurse within one of our local NHS trusts and I have a stable career in healthcare. In March twenty twenty five, I purchased seventy one Silver Street after a four year struggle to sell my previous flats in Riverside, which was affected by cladding concerns. During those years, I lived in a state of uncertainty, unable to move forward with my life or make long term plans. The emotional and practical upheaval has been significant and I pinned my hopes of finally feeling settled on this property. My intention has always been to renovate seventy one Silver Street, which is which was vacant since twenty nineteen and make it my home. The proposed porch and side return extension were inspired by two properties I viewed during my search for a new home, both located in Norwich, NR three and NR two, on similar streets with comparable architectural styles. Based on these examples, I felt confident that my plans would be in keeping with the character of the area and would be acceptable. Following concerns raised about the height and potential impact on my neighbour, I was happy to make the amendments recommended by the planning officer. I understand and appreciate that this build represents a change to the area, but my intention has never been to cause distress. I would like to thank Adam for presenting my application today and I respectfully encourage the committee to consider the application with an objective and balanced view. Kind regards, Adam Smith, owner of seventy one Sil- Silver Street.
Right, thank you. Councillor Knight.
And first, I'd like to praise our planning officers for the work that they've done communicating with me on this proposal. They've been incredibly helpful during the entire process. So thank you very much for that. I raise this today because I feel that the planning documents themselves are incomplete. As a resident of terraced housing that is near identical to those in question, I question why the diagrams don't show the neighbouring properties to properly show the impact on neighbouring residents. I'm also concerned that the tunneling effect remarked in the document, to reiterate the points already made. It's it's either the the tunneling does not already exist and it's implementing more tunneling or the tunneling exists and the problem is being exacerbated by it. I'm also concerned about how close the build is to the boundary, as I believe that the neighbour's fence would have to go down for the development to go forward. And I worry as a resident of terraced housing in the area that this proposal sets a precedent of planning documents not properly considering the direct surroundings of the proposal. It is for that reason that I would ask my colleagues to consider ensuring that any development on terraced housing should include clear visualisation of neighbouring properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very concise. Okay, we, any comments from officers before we move on?
Just come back briefly on a couple of things. Firstly, the the planning, planning application documents are required to show the proposal and they do that. Occasionally, on on certain types of application, we would ask for a street scene which might represent the the other properties in the street. In this case, that wasn't considered essential for us to assess the planning application, especially because there's no change in land level between the two sites and therefore you can you can quite easily work out what level a an extension on this site would affect the neighbour. So that that wasn't a document that we requested as part of the planning application. And just to come back about this tunneling effect, just it is it's a terminology thing. So tunneling, in our view, is the impact of an the enclosure, the enclosure impact of having two tall walls either side of you, essentially. So when looking out from the rear window, there would be some some tunneling already experienced as a result of the the fact that there are two tall walls and a fairly narrow gap between those two tall walls. There would be a loss of outlook, which is a different matter to those side facing windows. And that's that's been addressed in the report, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't use the word tunneling on those for those side windows.
Wow, okay. Thank you very much. We move now on to questions. Do any of our councillors?
Sorry, Chair, we'll just wait for councillor Knight to leave and then we'll get started.
Vacate the room, yeah.
Thank you.
Do councillors have any questions in relation to this? Councillor Stuteley, first of all.
Yes, thank you and thank you again for the report. The we have these occasionally and usually they go through as permitted development, don't they? And this this has obviously been called in. And it is, I think it is easy to see that this is going to have a significant effect on on the the neighbouring property. So I just wanted to just go over again, the 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 impact that offices think will have on the on the amenity of the the property next door at number sixty nine in particular. So just cover that again for my benefit and and for others. First of all, please. Thank you.
Yes, so something which slide illustrated best. Can we have the proposed elevations, please, David? Thank you. I think it's the last slide but one, I think. So there are there are two amenities considerations that have been raised. The first is overshadowing to those three windows. And then the second is loss of outlook to those three windows. Because the eaves of the the extension have been reduced to two point three metres, which is our standard, the standard usually what we ask for with application of this kind, we consider that's been acceptable, both for the applicant and for the for the neighbour. And also the removal, you can see it from the diagram of the the pitched element of the extension by one zero point one metres from the boundary and then you have more distance before you get to the window. So we thought that was an acceptable solution. So originally, these were two point eight metres, so it's been dropped by, which would had a definitely an unacceptable overshadowing effect. In terms of outlook, it's similar grounds as well that now the eaves have been reduced to an acceptable level, there will be more view of, I think it's sky, I think it's one of the considerations for an acceptable impact upon outlook. So they're the two.
Can I just add something to that as well? We need to bear in mind that the a boundary treatment of two metres could be installed at any time between these two properties. So this being reduced to two point three metres in height means that there's actually only a thirty centimetre increase in height beyond what could be installed at any point in time.
May I come back on that, please, Chair?
I'm just looking to see if any other questions. So yes, you may.
And thank you. Okay, but nevertheless, there is still going to be an impact from those thirty centimetres. That that that's something that's clear. But can we go back to the photo with the where you've numbered the windows, please? So while weighing this up, I'm just trying to establish what yeah, what would be the what would be the impact, the effect on on the property next door. So do we have measurements to hand of the existing heights of the rear of this property and also the the one next door on the other slide? So in other words, how much higher than is it going to be? And also, the object raised a point about incorrect measurements and I'd like to know how that affects our decision making, please.
Well, first, I measured the two point oh metres from the plans that the gentleman's consented that it's two point four metres. But essentially, you're still, well, unless you're making your decision based on looking at that and visualising it and thinking it's only a, was it zero point three metre increase if it's two point eight metres or zero point seven metre increase if it's two point four metres, but the the dimensions are all, as you said, within the prior approval limits on account of the length, the distance from the rear wall. So there is what would generally be considered acceptable from our point of view.
Thank you. And Chair, just one more, if I may.
Yeah, you may.
So, yes, thank you. The so just to just again to reiterate, in normal circumstances, this would have been given permitted rights.
It would have been a prior approval application where essentially if we don't receive any objections, it would be within the measurements, we'd say that prior approval wasn't required. But likely, there would have been objections, then we would have had to commit to consider amenity effects.
Okay, so we are being asked to consider an exception to what would normally be permitted.
Any more questions from our councillor members? Okay, if that's the case, then we move on to debate the merits or otherwise of the proposal. Does anyone have anything they wish to say in support or in rejection of this?
I think I might as well follow up if I if I may, considering I've asked questions. I think this is it's it's difficult to find a a reason to to vote against this because of the because there's nothing in the papers that give us, you know, a really strong reason to vote against. But I've got real sympathy with the with the people that live next door. And it's unusual for me, but I I'm going to abstain on this one because I can't support it, but at the same time, there's nothing for me to vote against, I'm afraid. And that is because of the guidance and paperwork and not not of for anything other reason.
Councillor Lubbock.
Yes, I am. I think the applicant has been sympathetic to the neighbour in coming up with a a solution to to minimise the impact of the development, but at the same time, obviously wanting to go ahead with some development. And I think we we were shown lots of photographs of around the area and it is a sort of mishmash of different heights and lengths and, you know, solutions to the problems of very close living. And and I I I would say, well, thank you for at least considering the neighbouring property and knowing that a three metre, a two metre boundary fence could be put up anyway. I don't think there's going to be too much impact from what's proposed here, so I should be voting in favour of it.
Councillor Hampton.
Yeah, similarly, based on what we've got in front of us, I I can't find reasons to vote against it. I think especially since we've seen the photos, but picking up on the points, raising the speeches about the neighbouring properties, I think personally, even from the site plan and what was presented, I've always been able to see what the impact is or that there is an impact. Photos have really helped to kind of visualise that a bit more. And as ever, I'm not saying that there's not an impact and you always kind of feel sorry for neighbours in these circumstances, but as ever, based on the information and what we are allowed to to base sound decisions on, I I'll I'll be voting in favour today.
All right, I'll I'll give councillor Oliver first of all, because you've you've already had a say. Councillor Oliver.
And thank you, Chair. Yes, I suppose. Sorry, I can understand where they're coming from with that, but some I, you know, just kind of visualising if one person's going to extend a little bit further and then a little bit further. It looks like a mishmash already from the back, as councillor Lubbock said. Do we have any potential for restricting that or, you know, keeping things less of a mishmash, tidying up a little?
Well, just from a yeah, I mean, just from a personal viewpoint, I anyone who knows me knows I often spend time drawing diagrams during planning and I think the applicant certainly made every effort to sort of by providing a sloped or pitched roof down towards the fence, made every effort to reach a compromise. And as we know, there are lots of these applications that do come through. So on balance, I think I probably would vote in favour of it, but I'm always women to be persuaded. Councillor Stuteley, you wish to speak again. You said you're going to abstain, but that's he he.
Well, thank you. Well, it is supposed to be a debate, so not necessarily just to speak once. So thank you. You're just following up from what other members have said. And I think that the key worker or not, I think the this applicant has worked with the officers to push the boundaries as as far as they can and not actually with with neighbours. And 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 that is what that is. I think that's a fact rather than the, you know, the if you're going to be, if you're going to be neighbourly, I don't think this is the kind of extension that that you would come forward with, but unfortunately, like I said, there's nothing, there's no planning reason to turn this down, but because I think that the I think it is going to be overbearing and and will have an impact on the on the neighbour. I'm going to, I'm still going to abstain on this one.
Okay, the any more debate? None at all. So the recommendation is to approve this application. Do I have a second for this? Councillor Lubbock.
Just to check, Chair, you're proposing.
I I'm sorry, yeah, I'm proposing this, yeah. And we have councillor Lubbock as a second, so we'll move straight now to the vote. Those who are voting in favour of this application, please raise your hands. And those who are voting against this application, again, please raise your hands.
Zero.
And those abstaining. And those abstaining from this, please raise your hands.
Three.
Three. Rather, that means this application is is approved. And I do have my sympathies with the with the neighbour, but on planning grounds, I think we, it it will go forward. That brings to conclusion our planning meeting for today. I thank everyone for their patience in what has been quite an interesting and lengthy time this morning on just three items. I thank councillor Stuteley for his contribution to the first item, which I did find quite compelling in places. Thank you very much, everybody.